We're going to have to make a motion to adjourn from our executive session. Could I get a motion?
Mr. President, I move to adjourn from executive session.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
I'll take it.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. We are out of our executive session. So for our study session, Dr. Gilbert's going to lead off with a rundown of kind of mental health stuff that we're doing right now and then we'll hopefully have some time to have more open discussions. Could you... Go ahead, Dr. Gilbert.
I have our...
I'm here.
Oh, sorry. I have our counseling and social service team to share some updates with you as it relates to the topics that we've been talking about in mental health and student wellness. I have Brenda Vargas, our director, who is going to start it off and she will share what team she has with you and will jump right in. So... Mrs. Vargas.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Narducci, members of the community, and students. Thank you for being here this evening. My team and I are delighted to join you today to bring you an update on all things we have been working on. Let me start with introductions.
Hi, I'm Natasha Davis, prevention coordinator.
I'm Erin Whitmore, the district social worker.
And I'm Kristine Ryan, district counselor.
We have another staff member that works with our team half-time. Her name is Cynthia Howell and she is a district school counselor. She could not be with us today as she is awaiting baby number two. Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge and celebrate the great contribution that school counselors make, so we would like to wish every school counselor happy National School Counseling Week this week. We will also thank you. We will also be celebrating social workers during our National School Social Work Week, and that happens March 6th through the 11th, right before spring break. We'll get started. So first and foremost, we'd like to start off with just reviewing who our staff is and who provides the actual supports within our schools. As you notice here, we're mentioning school counselors and social workers. We have about a total of 96 school counselors district-wide. Twenty-five of them are elementary, 19 are junior high, and 48 are high school. We have 23 social workers district-wide, 11 at the elementary level, most of them provided through the school safety grant, 2 junior high, and 8 high school. We have shifted to do a more comprehensive model that utilizes data to drive our supports. As you can see, data drives our practice in providing proactive preventative services within the three domains: academic, personal, social, and career. School counselors are required to provide universal classroom lessons for all students. They use data to drive Tier 2 services with small support groups. All school counselors and social workers are trained in responding to Tier 3 services. School counselors' programs have an obligation to ensure that underperforming or underrepresented students receive unsolicited academic, career, and social emotional support. These underrepresented groups, such as our Black and our Brown students, our Native students, our students with disabilities, and our students who identify with the queer population, are more vulnerable and we acknowledge the need for targeted and intentional supports. As you can see, school social workers are mental health professionals uniquely trained to integrate the school, community, and family contacts into interventions and resource referrals. School social workers are mental health experts with very specialized training. Data shows that school counselors and social workers create positive school climates. They generate successful outcomes for students and transform cultures to foster safety. School social workers and school counselors are master-level trained. We have a group of school counselors and social workers that volunteer for the entire district whenever we have a crisis. Participating in the crisis team requires additional training, and these amazing professionals leave their campuses to support another campus in that community when we have a student death. In the process of serving students, we acknowledge that the work we do impacts the entire family and school system.
Okay, so as Brenda mentioned, a big piece of what school counselors and social workers do is data collection. And as we look, as we reflect on data collection, we realize that there's a real need for data in order to adjust our programming and really be able to focus on what the needs of the students are. So we thought it would be great to share a little bit of this data that's collected through this pie chart. This was collected by a specific elementary school counselor, and so this reflects her use of time. And this particular school counselor has about 658 students at her school, and this is reflective over the first semester of this year. So as we look at this pie chart, we can start to see through the data collected that about 70% of her time was direct services, which is amazing. She's seeing students one-on-one, in small groups, really having that direct impact on students and meeting their needs. Also in this, we can see that about 3% of that time was spent with doing classroom instruction. And as we take a look at this data and as we talked about it as a team, we can start to infer some things based on the data that was collected. And one of those is, yes, it's great that 70% of the time was used for direct services. We also, as a school counselor, one of the big pieces is, and we'll talk about this in a second, is that Tier 1, which is really getting in front of every student in the school. And this particular school counselor wasn't able to do that. And so we can look at this and say, there's a little bit more of a reactive piece sometimes, especially with higher numbers of students and the counselor-to-student ra... or, excuse me, the school counselor-to-student ratio. The American School Counselor Association would recommend 1 to 250 students. And we, in this particular situation, as I mentioned, was 1 to 658. And so we do have that, those times and those opportunities where we do have to be a little bit more reactive. In looking forward, though, in terms of this data, we like to kind of look at this and think about in the future, and looking at the RFP and the initiatives with having additional counseling services available to students, as well as potentially school safety grants and additional school counselors and social workers being available, really being able to potentially minimize that ratio so it does become a little bit smaller and we can start to have not only that reactive piece, but really be proactive as well. So just a little bit of data here, and there's various forms of data that are collected, so we can focus in on what are the grade levels for which we're responding to the most? What are the needs with specific grade levels that we are needing to respond to and so that we can be proactive the next time we're in a classroom to use that data and really make sure we're meeting the needs of the students? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had it. My bad. Okay, sorry. Moving on. So now talking about collaboration. Brenda talked about the roles of the social worker and the school counselor, and that collaboration between the two is so very important in meeting the needs of all stakeholders. So when we're talking about students, parents and guardians, the community, staff members, which we're finding is even more of a prevalent need as well, the needs for staff members and their mental health needs. And we do this partnering with other professionals on the campus, like school psychologists, our registered nurses. So really, this collaboration is such a huge piece of the puzzle when it comes to making sure that our schools and our communities are functioning. So in, as we talk about this collaboration, I'd like to kind of explain it from our tiered approach. So as we're talking about the Tier 1, that looks, that's the counselor, the school counselor, who's really meeting those Tier 1 needs. So getting in front of every student on a campus and having that opportunity to present lessons and, at the high school level, really talking about credit checks and education career and action plans, so that opportunity for that Tier 1 to reach all students. That's the school counselor's role. Going into Tier 2, we're talking more about, this becomes a collaboration from the social worker and the counselor. So we're talking small groups. And this could be, again, accomplished by a school counselor as well as a social worker. And when we get into those groups, it might be, if you have the luxury of having a school counselor and a social worker on your campus, it really does start to look at what are the needs of that school. And the school counselor might be more of a broad-range topic, maybe a larger group, whereas a social worker might kind of gear into a specific topic and maybe a smaller group. And then we get into the Tier 3, and that's where the social worker really has that opportunity to dig a little bit deeper, really meet the needs of whatever resources are needed, long-term supports for an ongoing support. So really making sure that we're digging that deeper, to that deeper level and meeting those specific needs through mental health services and resources as well.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
And just because I didn't see it in here, in this big spreadsheet that we're looking at here. What's the difference between mental health stuff that we're doing now and what we did last year? Has there been any change between last year and this year?
In terms of the mental health services provided?
Yeah.
Okay. And I can jump in. So this year specifically, we've added some additional deliverables, specifically teen mental health first aid, which we're going to be actually covering in one of the slides. In order to be able to train regarding youth, teen mental health first aid, which is different than youth mental health first aid, we've had to train our trainers and then make sure that those individuals are available in order to train. We've trained at ICAN, in which we will cover a little bit, I think I'm jumping ahead a little bit, as well as Perry High. But in regards to services, the additional staff that we've been able to add, Mr. Oliver in the last three years, were those additional social workers in regards to the school safety grant. And so that has really made a huge impact. The majority of those schools, those 11 schools, the majority of them were title schools. So now they had a school counselor and a social worker, with the exception of two schools that weren't title, but that had really high numbers in regards to suicide assessments, DCS reporting, in regards to child abuse, and that's why they received those allocations. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that's a little bit better. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think some of that...
Brenda, isn't some of that built into the presentation here as to specifics?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I didn't want to jump too much ahead to steal someone's information. Thank you. Okay, go on. Go on.
Okay. Okay, so in talking about that collaboration piece, I kind of talked through the Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 and that delineation. And then I'll just speak to the fact that I actually was one of those schools last year who had the opportunity to gain a social worker through the school safety grant. And when that happened, I've been a one-person show for, I won't say how many years, but it's been a few. And so I was very, not hesitant, because I was of course welcome to help, but what was that going to look like specifically? And I will tell you, it's one of those situations where you just don't know what you were missing until you have that opportunity. That collaboration with a wonderful social worker, who I was able to work with for a year, once she was there, we were able to dig so much deeper into the needs. And you don't realize the pieces that you weren't doing until you have another person there. So it was really just a beautiful partnership and that collaboration, and we were able to, I was able to meet the needs of the school as a whole, and then, you know, my small groups, and then she got into the Tier 3, really meeting those mental health needs, digging deeper when it came to students who were in foster homes, students who were in group homes under DCS care, really providing resources, being able to really, again, just look at what was the whole, that comprehensive program we could offer. I just, I was able to see that effect that we had on students, which was remarkable. So I was lucky enough to have that opportunity. Unfortunately, not everybody in the district does. We're going for those school safety grants again. We're in that renewal process, so keeping our fingers crossed there. But it truly does make such a difference on the school, the school environment, and being able to meet the needs of students, which is remarkable. So that being said, as I kind of wrap up the collaboration piece, we are, there is data to support the impact of a school counselor and a social worker, and that impact being specific to improved attendance, improved school climate, sense of belonging for students on campuses, an increase in academic achievement and graduation rates, lower rates of suspension and disciplinary action, as well as students feeling more safe at schools, and also having an increase in that opportunity for post-secondary planning. So, which, these are all goals of our schools, right? This is what we're here for and what we want to see happen. So having that collaboration between social workers and counselors is very impactful.
So let's continue to talk about collaboration. Collaboration doesn't just happen within those individuals that work within a school. Collaboration has to happen with the community as well. We were thinking already about, during that RFP process, a request for purchase in regards to the additional mental health services. We realized that in order to really determine what the needs were going to be, how we were going to move forward, we really had to bring in other stakeholders to the conversation to have intimate conversations in order to really kind of guide us and make sure we weren't missing anything. So we developed a comprehensive wellness committee, and let me refer to my notes to make sure I don't forget anything. And as we identified individuals within our community that were parents, as well as, we had mental health professionals, healthcare professionals, university-level professionals, staff and administration from our schools as well, the Chandler Care Center director, and other community partners. Some of these community partners are here today: Polly from Access, Christina from Chandler Regional Hospital, Dr. McCall, and former board member Lindsay Love. Thank you for being here to support us. They've been part of these conversations, as you can see the number of times we've met virtually and the topic in which we have discussed, which we will be sharing a little bit further, more in detail as to those pieces. But one of the things that we discussed last was in regards to comprehensive crisis model. We shared, we've trained our staff in regards to what is known as C-stag, and that stands for the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines, which allows us to have identified evidence-based model of following instances when there has been a threat to a school. Now we can say we have trained team members at each and every single one of our schools, K-12, and that includes administration. Another complementary training is our Prepare Training, which through the National Association of School Psychologists, thank you Sue Arndt-Priester for being here to support us. She leads the school psychologists in our district. They provide evidence-based training related to school crisis, prevention, and response. We are lucky in CUSD because there's only a handful of trainers in the entire state. And we have two of our very own school psychologists that are trained, Marcy Shutram and Sonia Moran, and I hope I'm pronouncing those names correctly. Our social workers were trained just this last Saturday. Yep, they put in a sixth day of work, and so we appreciate that. And our school counselors will be trained next school year. In summary, both trainings improve and strengthen our school safety and crisis management plans and emergency response systems, because we know there's always room for improvement. Ensuring the safety of all is a top priority of CUSD. So our committee will continue to meet, discuss future goals, continue the dialogue in order to determine if there's additional barriers, especially as we insert and add additional mental health services.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would just like to provide a review on Jake's Law so that our families are aware that this is available to them. In 2020, the Arizona Legislature passed Jake's Law, which created a fund that provides uninsured and underinsured families access to behavioral health services when they're referred through an educational institution. The intention of Jake's Law is to relieve families of that financial burden when they need to access critical services. They wouldn't be able to receive such financial support if it was not for the school making the referral. So if a school places a referral to, you know, one of the agencies even on here, that agency can then access and utilize Jake's Law funding to help cover the costs of services. We know that the process of accessing the behavioral and mental health supports, it can feel overwhelming, defeating, complicated, and policies such as Jake's Law provide our families with one less stressor. You know, for example, if I'm a parent and my child is in crisis, and crisis can look like a lot of different things, right? That can look like substance abuse, that can look like thoughts of suicide, self-harm, psychosis, right? It's really difficult to know where to begin to identify options. Who can I reach out to? How quickly can my child get an appointment? What will be the cost? You know, and to our CUSD parents, know that you can contact a school counselor or social worker for guidance navigating that complicated system. From there, they can place a referral on my behalf of, as the parent, to a local behavioral health agency that matches my child's unique needs. You know, and I think it's really important that our CUSD school counselors and social workers establish relationships with our families, right? We know that this is key and that this is something that they do very well, and they work hard to maintain those relationships. So parents and guardians are more likely to come to them for support, right? They feel more comfortable, if their child is in crisis, approaching somebody that they have that rapport with, to be able to help guide those decisions when their child is experiencing that. I think that speaks volumes, right? To be able to have that direct connection. I'm going to give you like an analogy, so bear with me here. So when parents and guardians have a child in crisis, they know they need to get them to a destination where they can receive help. You can think of our school counselors and social workers as the gate agent to provide families with the correct boarding pass to the appropriate destination. So you can think of our school counselors and social workers as the gate agent to provide families with the correct referral to the appropriate agency. You know, they really facilitate that direct connection. It's no secret, the behavioral health system is overwhelmed. You know, wait times to see a provider are between six and eight weeks. Some agencies, it's upwards of 12 weeks. Most insurances don't provide adequate coverage for mental health services, leaving our families in crisis with bills that they can't afford to pay. Jake's Law, in partnership with, you know, school districts, eliminates such barriers. It's really important for our families to note that there's no expiration date on Jake's Law funding. Funds are available until they have been exhausted. You know, and since adopting the policy in November, and I just, you know, want to take a second and applaud and acknowledge that CUSD was one of the first ones to adopt that policy, right? And the response has been so incredibly positive that actually other districts, sister districts, are reaching out to inquire about our implementation strategies. You know, and that wouldn't have been possible without our local community partners. Some of them are identified on this list, so Jewish Family Children's Services, Resilient Health, Southwest Behavioral Health Services. We are grateful for those partnerships. Our counselors and social workers are grateful for those partnerships. Our families are grateful for those relationships. And Erin's going to talk about the community partnership piece a little bit more.
So before we dig deep into the community partners that we have already established, I wanted to take a step back and give a little bit of a bigger picture as to what we're working with within the Chandler Unified School District boundaries. Geographically, CUSD covers 80 square miles. It's within Chandler, Gilbert, and Queen Creek boundaries. Now, each of these government entities has different basic needs, resources that are available, but each of them has different protocols and different ways to access those resources. Our counselors and social workers at the different sites are knowledgeable about how to assist families with these needs based on their locations. We're also lucky to have many social service agencies within our community. However, sometimes families need help narrowing that down and knowing which resources are appropriate for them. Over the past five years, our department has composed a comprehensive district resource guide. This is available for all staff and families on the department website. It's 54 pages, and it, all of these agencies have been vetted by our department over the last five years, and it continues to evolve and update. These resources include more than just mental health and counseling resources. Our families are needing assistance with all basic needs as well. The district resource guide covers housing, domestic violence resources and support, assistance with funeral expenses, legal assistance, substance abuse, even tribal and veteran resources as well. And some of the examples that I wanted to share with you guys is just to give some concept, context of where we're coming from. A school counselor recently assisted a family whose the dad was shot and killed, and the mom is now a single parent to six children. The counselor was able to connect that family with resources for short-term rent assistance as well as long-term housing options. They were also able to help them with food resources so that that's just one thing that they don't have to worry about right now while they're in this crisis. We also receive calls very frequently from staff members who are needing support as well. We recently had a staff member who reached out for community resources to help support their queer student, not only for support for the student, but also help for the families to be able to navigate this, navigate this and to help support, know how to support their student. With all of these agencies within the district resource guide, the school counselors and social workers provide families with the contact information, but after that, it's up to the family to communicate with them moving forward, which is what brings us to most of the agencies on these slides. The agencies listed here are ones that we have very close partnerships with. These agencies, our social workers and counselors can make direct referrals to after discussing with the families and receiving consent. Many families appreciate this as it eliminates one more step for them to do when they're in a crisis or struggling. These agencies, thanks to our MOUs, are able to share information with the schools more easily. It helps with the continuity of care and helps the families, schools, and outside agencies work together as a team. For example, Not My Kid, who we have representation here today, thank you very much, provides prevention programming to a lot of our schools. Topics include internet safety, vaping, substance use. These are assembly-style presentations for students as well as support groups. There's parent presentations as well, and these are at several sites throughout CUSD, including elementary and secondary. Southwest Behavioral Health Services and Lighthouse Well Health are also going to be providing school-based clinicians to certain sites that have been identified. We've had a longstanding partnership with Southwest, and they've been providing clinicians on our campuses for a long time, and now with the RFP, we're able to provide, we're able to add Lighthouse to that as well, and we have Lighthouse here tonight, so thank you. Some of our newer ones are JFCS and Resilient Health. These are regionally-specific mental health support. JFCS is going to be more accessible to our northern schools, and Resilient Health is going to be more centralized. JFCS is also a health hub, so that can help to support the medical side of care as well. Our partnerships continue to grow, and we are so thankful for the community partners that are here to support us tonight.
So, I'd be remiss if I didn't say we're here, and my team and I, in the last five years, have really had some tough conversations. This topic and what we do, there's a lot of stigma, and we all know that. It's hard to talk about, but we need to talk about it. And one loss of life is too many, which is why, when we started thinking about what are we not doing, what are we not seeing, what solution can we come up with that does not exist, right? And having the money to do that, so thank you to this board for allowing us those funds. We want to talk about the new initiatives that we would like to move forward and provide to CUSD students and families. So some of you may have heard, we are getting ready to take a big leap of faith because we know that our students and our families deserve more. We are, sorry, I'm a little emotional in sharing this because this is very near and dear to my heart as it is to my team. We're getting ready to open up the Hope Institute of Chandler Unified School District. And let me explain to you what will the Hope Institute do. The Hope Institute is, will have a focus to address students that are struggling with thoughts of suicide with treatment that has proven to reduce suicidal ideation in approximately 5.2 weeks. Students will be able to be seen within 48 hours. It will be located in our southeast region. I'll share a little bit more specifics in just a minute. It will be evidence-based treatment that students will be receiving, and that is by the clinician. They're going to be trained in CAMHS training and dialectal behavior therapy. What's important for our parents and our community to know is, CUSD, this is a CUSD service for CUSD students, K-12. The Hope Institute will maintain separate facilities, including dedicated entrances and office space, to provide access to families while maintaining safety and privacy of our students. The Hope Institute of CUSD will be located off of the campus of Perry High School, right off the student parking lot at the Perry House on the corner of Val Vista and Queen Creek. We know there is a great need for this level of service, and we know currently our emergency rooms and places like Mind 24/7 are not long-term solutions. There are other intensive outpatient programs... There are other intensive outpatient programs, but they are costly and have longer wait times for up to two weeks to intake. I want to bring everyone's attention to that number, 395. From July of this school year till December, our school counselors and social workers completed 395 suicide assessments this year in one semester. That is students with thoughts of suicide that in some way, shape, or form shared that they wanted to die. That's 395 lives. Please keep in mind when our students are in crisis and struggling, so are our parents. It's a scary experience, no matter if it's the first time, the fifth, or the 10th. My department will diligently work along with the other departments such as our construction department to solidify building plans and move forward to opening doors. It is our expectation that this Hope Institute of CUSD at the Perry House will be the first of two locations with the second location opening at the new Chandler Care Center once it's built for our northern end of town. We will also work closely with our Department of Marketing Communications in order to disseminate communication to our families. In addition to the Hope Institute of CUSD, which will be the first of its kind in the nation, there's only one Hope Institute and it currently resides in the community of Perrysburg, Ohio. And I would be remiss to say if I didn't share that Phoenix Children's and other partners are watching closely in order to replicate this model statewide. The additional services that we are so humbly accepting is the additional supports from Southwest Behavioral Health and Lighthouse Well Health, which we have met and shared the remaining gaps that exist within our schools. We've identified with our committee the gaps at particular sites in which we are moving towards finding space at some of our southeast locations for clinicians to support students on school site. Many of these sites have high ratios and limited resources within our community to refer families. This process is ongoing and we are working with our providers and principals in order to determine space and availability. It is essential that we bring these services to our schools because we have students with many different behavior issues or things that become behavior issues because of the struggles that they're having that are mental health related.
When's that first one going to open?
Can you repeat that, Mr. Oliver?
When is that, when is that first Hope Institute going to open?
I'm waiting for that information from our construction and our other departments. We're working alongside. I don't know if Dr. Gilbert has any insight.
I don't have a timeline for you at the moment, but we're in the process of construction. We're working with the, with the team so that we can get started.
And we also have the funding that was set aside by the prior board of the $5 million to be able to assist, move that forward, those efforts forward and also to assist our students being referred as well. So, that's part of where that money's going besides social workers, counselors, and additional services at the schools. Part of that money, and we wanted that to be distributed over multiple years versus a one-shot and we're done. And this board has also approved the extend out of that going for three years so that we can find a way to build this into a replication model that's self-sufficient and built-in. So, again, it's a unique, it's a unique proposal and Brendan or team and Dr. Gilbert have and also Dr. Marshall have done everything they can. The services will be there, we're just waiting on the facility to be ready.
We have already have a design approved and we're moving forward and looking at the construction of addressing the issue.
Thank you.
Yes, Barb? Ms. Maudsten, I apologize.
A quick question. Will we be looking at, I know we've had MOUs with other agencies for Jakes Law and will that also be, will that also apply to the Hope Institute?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have a simple question. I've been saving my questions for the end of presentation. Do you have a preference, Mrs. Vargas, on how to receive them? Okay, I'll continue to wait.
And I'm going to let my colleague.
So, I just wanted to go over what some of the current deliverables are right now for our secondary students and then what, some of the new ones that we're rolling out this semester as well. SOS or Signs of Suicide is delivered in 7th and 10th grade. That's delivered by our school counselors. This is a suicide prevention program that educates students about the relationship between suicide and depression. We encourage all students to seek help from trusted adults, whether they have concerns about themselves or a friend, using the ACT message, which is Acknowledge, Care, and Tell. EverFi is another program that we, counselors deliver in 8th grade. This is the lesson, specific lesson that they deliver is called Understanding Mental Wellness. These lessons help students define what mental wellness is and models positive behaviors. It also provides strategies for coping during stress or mental health challenges. It also explores the impact of thought patterns, trauma, stigma, and times of uncertainty. The Help lessons are delivered by schools' social workers in 11th grade. Help stands for Help Every Living Person. This is also another suicide prevention program that talks about warning signs, how to access help, what is and what is not helpful. It also brings awareness to students for the available resources. For each of these deliverables, parents are given two weeks notification and during that time, they can inquire as to what the program is and then review the content as well. A few of the new initiatives that we are working on this semester is Teen Mental Health First Aid and the ASU Toolkit. Teen Mental Health First Aid is a program for when a student, well, as we all know, when a student is struggling with their mental health, they're more likely to go to a peer than they are to an adult, at least initially. A program like Teen Mental Health First Aid teaches teens how to identify, understand, and respond to the signs of mental health and substance use challenges among their friends. It also gives teens the skills to have supportive conversations with their friends and to get a responsible and trusted adult to take over as necessary. We did an initial proof of concept with Teen Mental Health First Aid for the students at ICAN, myself and Christina Jones, who is a ER nurse and future psychiatric nurse practitioner and is also a parent at Perry. She and I delivered three 90-minute lessons to identified students at ICAN and received very positive feedback. Some of these students historically have struggled with attendance issues, but they were very excited to learn this material and continued to show up on the days that we were there. The next plan is to roll this out at Perry High School with the help of the Perry social worker Lindsay Taylor, who's here tonight. We've decided to deliver this to all the 11th grade students at Perry. This is 850 students in total. We currently have six trainers and will be delivering 36 90-minute lessons at Perry. This is a very big lift for our department, but the content is relevant and engaging to the students. Every 11th grade student within CUSD deserves teen mental health programming on their campus. Like I mentioned before, another proof of concept that our department has been working on is the ASU Toolkit and Kristine Ryan's going to talk more about that.
Thank you. So, about two and a half years, or two years ago, ASU had asked to partner with Chandler Unified School District with regards to developing this ASU Toolkit. This is before I started in the department. And this initiative was designed to, again, just like the Teen Mental Health First Aid, to really look at that peer-to-peer training so that when, we know that we're, that oftentimes students are going to their friends as that first kind of contact and so we want, we want students to understand how to help. We're certainly not training them to be mental health counselors by any means, but we just want to give them some of the knowledge and skills to listen and then to be able to direct them to adults. So, ASU had reached out to Chandler specifically and asked for some collaboration there in developing this Toolkit. So, they were able to work with various high schools in our district. We had parent volunteers, student volunteers, and even staff who volunteered to be a part of this Toolkit creation, specifically in the videos that are used as part of the training. So, ASU developed the curriculum, the videos, the Toolkit specifically, and they have now since, and this is where I come into play this year, have come back and asked to utilize the Toolkit to train our students. So, I originally had started working with our social workers and counselors and addressing more of our student mental health groups on how can we utilize this Toolkit? And as we opened up that conversation with ASU and partners, we decided that this isn't, this isn't, you know, one specific group. Mental health and mental health needs are affecting all different areas of students, whether, you know, we decided at that point, it's important to be able to meet the needs of various students in different clubs, including everything from our athletes to our dancers and our, you know, band and orchestra, to our GSA clubs, as well as our student mental health clubs. So, we are really starting to hone in on that and we actually have our first opportunity where ASU will come and do a training next week with Arizona, our college prep campus. Our social worker, Eddie Soto, has been just awesome with taking this initiative on. So, we're going to have our first opportunity to do a training next week with ACP. And then the goal is to train these students from various clubs and then that turnkey approach that they can go back and utilize this Toolkit with their specific clubs and really have that opportunity to, to train their peers. And it's not just about the training pieces of this is how you listen, it's also about self-care. Our students in general are suffering today and they need to know skills, they need to know even things from organization and self-care and relaxation. So, that's a big piece of this Toolkit as well, so these clubs can go back and, or these students can go back to their clubs and really utilize the Toolkit the best way that they think will be most helpful to their peers. So, the creation of the Toolkit really is about creating a safe and caring environment and across our schools, which is our goal, of course. So, that's an exciting initiative. That's also going to be taking place at all of our six comprehensive high schools, so that, those trainings are to come before the remainder of the school year.
So, we will continue to make it a priority to meet, listen, and allow students to be a part of the problem-solving process. We want to continue to provide a platform to work together, to collaborate, to recognize where we can do a better job, where are, where is the need, where are the gaps? For example, when it comes to risk of suicide, we know that our LGBTQIA+ youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide compared to their peers. We know this is a gap in the system. Therefore, I have met with almost all of the GSA clubs at our high schools to obtain feedback. I think I have one left next week. I've also met with our Bring Change to Mind clubs at our high schools and the student group, Arizona Students for Mental Health, to identify different projects and pieces moving forward and provide opportunities such as the ASU Toolkit that Kristine just mentioned, the Student Wellness Advisory Committee, which will take place on February 21st, which will be a representative, a student representative from every single junior high and high school, including our alternative schools. The Hope Squad, I think I've talked about this a little bit before, but we finally solidified a date on March 9th. All the junior highs will send a team of staff to be trained, so then they can turnkey and begin those Hope Squads at the junior highs. So, it's exciting to get that on the books. Lastly, our Student Mental Health Conference. You know, students are going to play a large role in helping us plan. What does this look like, right? And I think it's kind of cool, it's September 1st, which is the kickoff to World Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, so. I'm looking at the students over here like, you're going to help me, right? Yeah. We recognize the importance of giving students a voice, especially those who feel marginalized, to identify areas of concern and listen to their perspective within the school community. Know that we are listening and to me, listening is different than hearing. Hearing is passive, right? I can be watching TV and I can hear the dog barking in the background. I could be watching TV and I can hear the sirens in the background, right? Listening is active. Listening is really about the intent to understand. So, we want, we look forward to continuing to listen, creating those spaces for dialogue, and ensuring that you, the students, are a part of future solutions. These are just some photos from School Counselor Week.
Thank you very much, guys. Did you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Thank you for this wonderful presentation, for your investment and hard work. I feel very encouraged personally and I'm happy to see recognition and addressing of the known disparities we know our LGBTQ students experience when it comes to mental health. And I was wondering, in regards to the crisis situations, it sounds like I learned that we have the ability to have counselors and social workers go to directly impacted school sites for extra support. From personal experience and a lot of stories that I've heard within the district, they're not isolated incidents. So, when we have an attempt at or a loss of death by suicide in a school, it's not just that one school that tends to be impacted. We all know we're a school choice district. That means there's a lot of kids in and out and associations, even with junior highs within the boundaries of that high school. So, my question is, does that crisis response apply to neighboring schools or to the junior highs that may be within the same boundaries? What support do we see there?
Thank you for that question. It's an excellent question. Kids live in a global society and even if they didn't know a student, they might know someone that's a friend of a student, so that absolutely happens. What we try to do is we first start with what we know from the student, right? The actual family, siblings, anybody associated that we have through our student information system. Then, as we begin to find out who the student is connected to, we tend to find out who are the other schools or other potential students that may also have been impacted or what type of connection there is to a possible school, another school community or possibly an athletic or community event that they may attend. And we immediately, as soon as we find out, we call that school counseling team department chair and/or whoever is the lead at that site in order to notify them, hey, you're going to have impacted students. A lot of times by that point, depending on when we find out, because time is of the essence, and as you know, kids are just as savvy and have the information sometimes before we can even release it because they're sharing on social media and obviously through text message. So, sometimes they're aware before it's even released. So, they are aware that students are coming up to their office and now they have now the full picture. So, yes, those measures are absolutely taken because it does, there is a domino effect.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, you know, when we started on this path a couple of years ago, the previous superintendent, bless her heart, made a comment. And she said, you know, we may not be able to provide all the things that we're being asked to do, okay? So, now we hear this presentation and it looks like we're doing diagnoses and treatments on our campuses as essentially providing healthcare for kids. Not disputing there's a need, okay? But I'm starting to wonder, there are other government agencies that specialize in this type of work. And you may not be satisfied with the way they're performing, particularly at the county health department, but I'm starting to wonder if we're really starting to get away from our primary objective, which is educating kids, teaching them to read, because nobody else does that. So, can you kind of talk a little bit about the other agencies that specialize in this and why we're not using them to the fullest extent?
Thank you, Mr. Roors, for your question. I actually appreciate it. I want to start by first stating, there's a lot of needs. But if a child is madder sad, no matter what age they are, they can't read, they can't focus, they're not going to be able to do anything. Any teacher, even if they stand on their head with the best curriculum and the most, you know, experienced teacher, they're not going to be able to engage, they're not going to be able to receive because they're not regulated, because whatever it is that they're thinking and whatever is making them, in, for this sense, you know, let's just keep it minimal emotional and/or dysregulated, they're not going to be able to be available. So, that is the reality. We know that our, our schools are a big part of the community. Just like people may go to Walmart or Targeted to get everything that they need, a lot of times, families only trust schools because they know that we're going to be honest, supportive, and loving with everything that we can provide. Yes, there are other, there are many different agencies. The problem is when you have a child in crisis, if you have a child in need, you're working, you're trying to maintain the rest of the family well, as well as yourself as an adult, sometimes they're not quite sure as to where they should go. As Tasha shared, and I think she's getting ready here to interject, which I appreciate, sometimes in moments when we are in despair, we can't identify what's the best fit for us. Just like we have school choice, parents should also have a choice and be given all the options necessary as to where their child, their student... necessary as to where their child, their student, can receive the additional mental health supports. Just because it's there doesn't mean they can access it. They need a lot of support, and that's what we're here to provide.
If I can just add also to that is, one of the things, if you look at the different partnerships that we have, we're utilizing partnerships throughout the valley, throughout the state, and we know what's not in our wheelhouse. We know what we feel we're not experts in, and so we're bringing the experts in so that we can have a comprehensive care plan from intervention to post-invention, which is why it was so important that we did the RFP that we did, because there were gaps that we needed to make sure that we were addressing.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. And I think it's important to note that we don't diagnose. We don't provide that level of treatment. That's not within our wheelhouse, right? That's why we need to be able to refer out to agencies that can do that piece for us. It's about fine-tuning those noticing skills, right? I'm identifying that this child is in crisis, and you're absolutely right. There are websites that identify different agencies that families can utilize. However, I think it's really important, and it comes all the way back to that relationship. When I'm in crisis, do I wanna log on to a website and start cold-calling all of these agencies, or can I pick up the phone and call that school counselor or social worker and trust them to help me navigate through this process? It's really about, you know, matching the correct, to the correct agency. So the counselor and the social worker, they know that student. They know the family, so they're better able to direct them. But there's absolutely resources out there that do that. But again, I think it comes back to choice and, you know, just that relationship piece.
Member Wors, also, I'd just like to add a point. Years ago, we did things different. And if we repeat what we did years ago, we'd probably be doing things the same. We had a pandemic. We have social media constraints on kids. Kids are vulnerable, more vulnerable now than they've ever been before, and we know that. And so to do nothing and to just pretend that that is not our responsibility does not only create a community of disjointed learners, but it also creates a community that doesn't provide the care to get the kids in the seat to be able to, when we first started as a district years ago, former superintendent and former board members opened up the care center. It was to know that we had to take care of the whole child to be able to get them to be whole learners. And when I mean whole child, it's not a national thing. It's about health. It's about mental health. It's about physical health. It's about dental health. It's about immunizations. It's about everything, getting a child ready to go to school and not to have worries to be able to move forward and learn. Our best learners are those that have all those components taken care of, and in many in our community, they aren't taken care of. And so if we're gonna worry about our end product, we've gotta put the effort and the time into establishing that product along the way. And so I do appreciate the comment there, but there is more that we're doing now than ever before, and that's because there's more needs than ever before right now.
I have a question that's somewhat related. So the appointments are expected to be made within 48 hours with the Hope Institute. If, I'm assuming whoever takes the call will do an SSI assessment. If there's immediate, an immediate need, what will that play out as prior to the 48 hours?
Yeah, so we also have crisis response that we can reach out to immediately. If the situation calls for something more urgent, we're hoping in some instances, students might be able to be seen within 24 hours. But we are giving that 48-hour window, and they will be able to be seen on Saturdays as well. But if it's an emergency, right, a now, I mean, we've had counselors go with parents in an ambulance to take their child straight to the ER. We've had those circumstances happen, and yes, we will provide the necessary resource and refer to what is best for what that child needs right at that moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mrs. Vargas, how are we doing with the retention and hiring of our school counselors and social workers? Are we in a healthy state, or do we feel like we need some help with retaining? Something that caught my eye was 70% direct services for providers. That's a significant percentage. And I'm wondering, are we also, the way we've done with teacher certification, are we looking at maybe helping support with like licensure or any kind of carrots that, so we have a strong team at all times?
I appreciate that question very much. I'm actually in conversation with Dr. Nance and her team in regards to a school counseling cohort, so that, you know, individuals that are already in our district are interested in becoming either a school counselor. I know that there are talks at the ADE level in regards to scholarship pieces to be able to offset and offer that. We have many different partnerships. Natasha and I both sit on the professional organization boards. She sits on the social work board. I sit on the school counseling board. So we try to be active, not just with CUST, but we are active in our community and in our state, so that we can encourage people, good people with big hearts that wanna do right by kids, to come into this profession and find avenues for them to do that. I believe I have a support person right now at one of the junior highs that I've been eyeing, because she's an amazing human being, that I've been telling her, hey, you need to go back and get your bachelor's degree, and here's some scholarships and what we can do to help you. We have amazing people in our organization where there's a well, there's a way, and we know that, and our department has proven that in the last five years.
So today, are we fully staffed?
We are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But we want more, and we want the best of the best.
All right.
Thank you so much for that question and just that sentiment and statement and acknowledging that this work is difficult, and it can take a toll on us, and oftentimes, we can't leave it at the door, right? And so to be able to provide that support for our counselors and social workers is enormous. And I think that has a lot to do with why this department was created. I think that we're seeing higher retention rates than other districts because they don't have somebody at a district level to be able to advocate for them at the site level, right? So just, again, being able to reach out to us at a district level, it's our responsibility to help them to be able to help our students, right?
All right. Thank you, guys. Barb, do you have any? Yes, sir?
Actually, I have one more question. Did I hear you say that there are some teachers that you're planning to convert to social workers and counselors? Because we don't wanna lose any more teachers. Not a good thing.
We have teachers that sometimes are looking to get their master's degree in a different area other than possibly curriculum instruction or another area, and so they might want to be higher in the pay scale, and so they're looking to extend their learning. And we've had teachers, as a matter of fact, in the last five years, we've had four teachers that have switched over from teaching, gotten their masters, and are now amazing school counselors in our district.
Okay, because I personally prefer to have them in the classroom, but, okay, thank you.
We will find both, Mr. Wors.
We're fortunate that we have teachers and counselors that have a passion, and where we want them is where their passion is, because we think we're gonna see more production of what people are doing if they're passionate about what they're doing.
I was, I'd like to also make a slight, a small comment about the crisis care and the families. I truly appreciate the support that you can give to the parents that are in crisis, because when something happens with their child, the confusion of the parent, the emotion, it's difficult to think straight during that time. And the fact that they can reach out to the counseling staff or someone or a counselor at the school or a social worker at the school to get that support and not have to make 50 phone calls to try and get an appointment for their child. And then, even then, when they can finally find somebody who's open, it's still three months out. That is unacceptable for crisis care. And we don't, I mean, we don't see that in the regular health system. There's an emergency room or urgent care rooms or same-day appointments. But when it comes to mental health, it's much, it seems to be much more difficult due to the limited number of practitioners in the area. And so I really applaud the fact that we are trying to get these students and their families help within a very reasonable period of time, especially when they're in crisis. So thank you for the work that you are all doing on that.
Mr. President, members of the board, we actually have two students here that I would like to invite up to speak real quickly, if that's okay?
Hi, my name is Maya Letty. I'm pretty sure I'm probably a familiar face to you guys. I'm in 8th grade at Santana Junior High, and I am the Deputy Director of Arizona Students for Mental Health here in Chandler. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our organization, Arizona Students for Mental Health, Valley Interfaith Project, and the Arizona Peer and Family Coalition. We thank the CUST Board and staff for your attention to this critical issue. We appreciate the planning and funding for addressing student mental health. We are excited about the new Student Advisory Council and the Hope Institute, which should be a great way to treat these students that are in crisis. However, we are concerned about how to identify the students who need these resources. Most students won't ask for help, and we hear stories about students who display significant warning signs, including drops in grades and attendance and, among so many others. But they're not contacted by their school counselor to make sure they're okay and to check up on them. We know that schools alone cannot be responsible for identifying these students in need. Parents, coaches, peers, and other community leaders must be on the lookout as well. That's why Arizona Students for Mental Health and Valley Interfaith Project are putting together a Civic Academy, a presentation on mental health and signs that somebody is struggling. We will hold the first Civic Academy on March 13th at 6:30 PM at St. Matthew's Episcopal Church. Since the format of this meeting limits our ability to have a full discussion, we are inviting board members and administrators to join us for this presentation and a conversation afterward. So will you, our question is for the board members and superintendent, will you guys join us on March 13?
I would be happy to. Thank you for the invitation, Maya.
That's, that's a great invitation. Put it out there in front of everybody. I love it. When are, you're hired. And Donna, I think we have somebody to take over my calendar. I will definitely look at the calendar, and if we are in town and we're here, we will make it a priority to be there. I know we'll have some staff that'll be there as well, so I will let you know here as soon as I look at my calendar, because I didn't expect to be invited to the party, right, tonight. So definitely.
Okay, thank you so much.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm not familiar with where St. Matthew Episcopal Church is. Roughly, do we have cross streets?
I will have to ask Sammy.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
One more question for you. Will you have something just in writing so I can get to the board as well as staff that would like to attend? Can you email me with that information?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. There was somebody else that wanted to make some comments? Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you, guys. Joel, did you have anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys. Thank you very much. And I'm sorry we didn't have more time for any more back and forth. Our first meeting ran late, so we have to start our board meeting here a few moments late.